Evening. I would call this meeting in order. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please start with a roll call.
Council President Albertson. Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Member Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
And Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present, one virtual.
All right, thank you. We're going to start off tonight with a special presentation. It's the 2026 Legislative Priorities to Council, and Eric Perry will be presenting along with David Foster.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for the time tonight. For the record, Eric Perry, Government Affairs Manager for the City of Renton, joined today by David Foster from Foster Government Relations, who represents the city down in Olympia, here to talk to you tonight about the 2026 Legislative Review and what to expect this upcoming session. Hand it over to you, sir.
Good morning. The legislative session will begin on January 12th, 2026, and it's a supplemental year, the second year of the of the cycle. So it's a short one, 60 days. They will be looking at the budgets that were passed earlier this year for the two-year budget process, operating capital and transportation, taking into account revenue, projection changes, caseload forecast changes, et cetera. So all of that will go into their decision-making process, the legislators' decision-making process, when it comes to the budgets. As we talked about earlier, and as you've certainly heard, the operating budget is not in great shape due to revenue not coming in as high as anticipated, as well as caseloads, meaning people looking for services from the state increasing. And so the operating budget is in a bit of a problem again. Transportation budget's doing a little bit better than it had been last time we spoke, due to some revenue increases that were approved again earlier this year. And the capital budget will be a much smaller one than it usually is in the in the odd-numbered years. But there still will be some capital expenditures that will be approved when they finish on, hopefully, March 12th, after 60 days. We did have a surprising number of special elections this year. There were nine special legislative elections due to changes that occurred after the 2024 elections. Folks that were appointed to their House or Senate seats had to run for to the remainder of those those terms. In the end, there were no actual changes. The appointees all retain their seats. There's one additional member, and you see on the on the screen there, Zach Hall in the 5th District. He was appointed to fill the House member seat, who had moved to the Senate seat after the unfortunate death of the senator in the 5th District. He was appointed after the filing period, so he did not have to run, but he will run with everybody else in the House in 2026. So no changes there. The governor will be putting forward his first budget. You may recall, last year, after he won the election, he wasn't actually sworn in until after the session began. So Governor Inslee had a budget proposal in December. Governor Ferguson ultimately signed the budget that was passed by the legislature, and this now will be his first budget that will come out sometime in mid sometime later this month, in mid-December. With those changes, we see now we have Senator Hunt, Representative Callen, and Representative Hall in the 5th District. They, of course, only have a small portion of of Renton, but it is still in the 5th District, so we're claiming them. And then the 11th District legislators, of course, Senator Hasegawa, Rep. Perquist, and Rep. Hackney all remain. We will see, you know, in relation to all the budgets that are worked on, there are, of course, policy issues, and each of these policy issues has a great deal of a large portion of the actual state budget. So education funding, of course, is always the biggest overall portion of the state budget. Housing, homelessness, behavioral health, all sort of fit under the same umbrella. You could probably throw public safety in there as well. These are going to continue to be areas that, I think, for for the next number of years, that are require a great deal of attention, and perhaps more so because of actions or lack thereof at the federal level, and what we know will be coming in the very near future. So those are the middle three. We'll continue to see a lot of activity. And then, of course, we will continue to talk about revenue, both at the state and local levels. And again, this was one that, just covering some of the issue areas that you all saw in the legislative agenda earlier, a number of the the different areas that we are looking at and focused on. I will say that when it comes to local government, legis and the legislature, a lot of bills that are introduced touch local government in some way, shape, or form. And so we do have a rather large, maybe not priority area, but we do have a large umbrella that we look at as legislation is being introduced. And I believe we're already seeing prefilled bills being introduced. So the 2026 session has begun.
Yep, that's it for us. Thought the mouse was broken for a second. So, yep, that's our presentation. We're happy to take any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. All right, we're going to move on to a couple of public hearings. The first one will be Renton Regional Fire Authority Street Vacation Petition, and it's VAC subsection 25, subsection 001, and presenting is Stephanie Rary. Stephanie?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Council Members. My name is Stephanie Rary. I am Property Services Specialist from Community and Economic Development. And tonight, this is a public hearing for a petition for street vacation that was submitted by the Renton Regional Fire Authority, which I will refer to them as RRFA, as most of us do throughout my presentation. The petition was verified on October 22nd, 2025, and pursuant to state and city code, more than two-thirds of the abutting owners must sign the petition. For this petition, RRFA owns all of the abutting parcels to the unopened right-of-way. King County parcel numbers 366450008, 3664500330, and 366450007. The unopened right-of-way segment was dedicated to King County by the plat of Janet's Renton Boulevard tracks in 1909, and the vacation petition is to vacate approximately 3,648 square feet. The unopened right-of-way is located in an area that was annexed to the city in 2021. There are no city utilities located in the unopened right-of-way. RRFA is currently developing the subject parcels abutting the right-of-way for a new fire station and maintenance building, which project was approved in 2025 under land use application LUA 24000373. As part of the project, RRFA will dedicate 227 square feet along Southeast 128th Street to the city, at no cost to the city, by the way. Here you can see the approved plan. The fire station is the top rendering. The bottom one is their maintenance facility that will be located on the south part of the area. And over on the right, you can see where the unopened right-of-way falls in the project area and why the Fire Authority vacation or petitioned the council to vacate the right-of-way. The unopened right-of-way is located east of 158th Avenue Southeast, south of Northeast 128th Street, and is bisecting King County parcel numbers 36645008 and between parcel numbers 3664500330 and 366450007. The east half of the unopened right-of-way adjacent to the requested vacation was vacated in 1990 by King County Ordinance 9771 pursuant to a petition by Lord of Life Lutheran Church. Can kind of see to the right where it's now all part of that adjacent parcel. The vacation petition was circulated to various city departments and outside agencies per comment. There were no comments or objections to the vacation petition, and no easements were requested. The Community and Economic Development Department recommends that the council approve the petition subject to the following condition: That petitioner provide an appraisal of the vacation area. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions? All right, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it. And do we have any correspondence?
I received no correspondence for this public hearing.
All right, and we have no one signed up to speak on this issue. So what is wish counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Albertson.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Council President McIrvin, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Stephanie.
And, sir, we'll need one more motion to-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the staff recommendation.
And direct-
And what was that? And do the direct for an appraisal of the vacation area?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McIrvin, that we approve-
Stack recommendation to-
Approve the stack recommendation to-
Adopt appraisal, ask for an appraisal from the vacationer. I got it.
Discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up is property acquisition, including through the use of eminent domain for King County parcels. There's four of them. And presenting will be Amanda Free.
It didn't come up. Wasn't. Yeah, it wasn't set up. It got a little click out. Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Council Members. Amanda Free, Economic Development Director. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing on four King County parcels on the east side of the East Valley Road. This is a 5.9-acre site that is currently occupied by Compton Lumber. They have an office building, a shop building, and security fences, and they have prepped the land below for future development. This provides an opportunity for a parks maintenance shop and a possible resource center for the city. If this looks familiar, that is because it is, because we approved, council approved the purchase and sale agreement on June 23rd, 2025. We had a fully executed purchase and sale agreement. We moved to escrow in June with an anticipated closing date of September 10th. One week prior to closing, the owner was unable to fulfill the obligations in the purchase and sale agreement. We have since been talking to them and continue to have those conversations, but they asked for additional time to fulfill the obligations, and they still have yet to date. At the request of the property owner, we are moving to eminent domain on the property. And we will continue to work on formalizing a new purchase and sale agreement with the property owner or subsequent owner. Our request is for council to adopt the ordinance authorizing acquisition of the four parcels through the city's powers of eminent domain, as we continue to reach a final agreement and hopefully be successful with that, or move to the next subsequent owner. Thank you.
Questions? All right, do we have any correspondence?
I received no correspondence on this public hearing also, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and I have nobody signed up to speak on this one. What's wish to counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember McIrvin, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? All right, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt staff recommendation to adopt ordinance authorizing acquisition of the four parcels through the city's powers of eminent domain.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize staff to start the process to use eminent domain for four parcels. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear who seconded the motion.
It was actually James and Ryan both seconded it, so.
Oh. You didn't choose who, I suppose. I'll pick one. Thanks. Thank you.
All good?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're moving on. Next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Get ready for a full weekend of holiday fun. It all begins this Friday, December 5th, at Coulon Park, when Santa joins us at Coulon Park, 6:15 PM, for the opening night of clam lights. Get your photo taken with the elf, join a sing-along, and enjoy the parade of boats in Argosy Christmas Ship. The holiday magic will continue Saturday at Renton Technical College with Battle of the Badges Holiday Lights Competition. Local public safety agencies, including our very own Renton Police Department, will display their holiday spirit from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. And top off your weekend with or without your furry friend at the K9 Candy Cane 5K Fun Run and walk along the Cedar River Trail Sunday, December 7th, at 9:15 AM. Pre-register by visiting rentonlaw.gov/k9register. The Renton Civic Academy is back and accepting applications for the 2026 session. The free eight-week program invites residents behind the scenes to learn about the responsibilities, operations, and decision-making process of city departments. The Civic Academy is scheduled for Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, starting January 22nd. Seats are limited, so apply today. For more information, go to yourvoice.rentonlaw.gov/civicacademy. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. So and we're moving on to audience comment. We do have a few people signed up to speak. I want to remind everyone that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. When I call your name, please step up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. Everybody will give them three minutes, and please, when you see the little yellow light come on, your time is ending, and so wrapping up your comments. Thank you. And first up is Maria Hudson.
My name is Maria Hudson. I am an unhoused resident of Bellevue, Washington. I submitted to this body Chapter 9.32 offenses by and against minors, contributing to the delinquency of a minor, applying tattoo to a minor, communication with a minor for immoral purposes, custodial interference, and I know typically, police officers aren't included in that, but as I move on to the next document that I submitted to you, actions for injury or death of a child. I'm submitting that because this council needs to understand that third-party perpetrators injure people's children and destroy parent-child relationship. I see a pattern in practice of lawfare, specifically against low-income people not being taken seriously when we report third-party child abuse of our children. That's why I also am submitting RCW 28A 32168. It mirrors our lived experiences with your officers. So what that means is that when subsection 1B says medically and legally accurate definitions of sex trafficking and information about terms, stigmatization, so on and so forth, your officers don't know what it is. When you go down to notes and findings, when it talks about how your officers basically disregard sex trafficking of black girls and say that it doesn't exist, that's in subsection 6. Child sex trafficking survivors are disproportionately girls of color. In King County, 52% of child sex trafficking victims are black, 84% of youth are female. Subsection 7, where it says that 80% of sex traffickers are white men, I'm getting to something here. When you look at what I took the time to submit to you, King County Special Assault Unit protocols and its mission statement, I have to tell you that when our lived experiences mirror hard science data, and I am a trained social scientist from the University of Washington, that your officers are obstructing reports and then violating separation of power doctrines, trying to falsely criminalize parent and child, when we are, our demographic is literally in a school district law, you guys need to do something about your officers. Criminal conduct, obstructing the reports, and obstructing prosecutions, because Aaron's Law is about prevention, and I don't appreciate officers gaslighting me and telling me sex trafficking isn't happening, when the the literal school district data and demographic says that your officers are exactly contributing to the cover-up of these child sex trafficking crimes. I know that, because I'm trained to read that data. So I would appreciate your officers to contact me, because child sex trafficking doesn't have a statute of limitation on it, and they still have failed to fulfill the mission statement for the King County Special Assault Unit. And they sit on that 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 special assault team as other police departments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up is Melody Stoll or Stole. Stale.
My name is Melody Stale. I live in Washington, and I'm, that was a hard one to follow. But I'm here because I frequent the nail shop over at New York, New York Nails at the Reserve over here in Renton, Washington. And the, I've been going there for years. And they have a manager over there now that I think is violating not only the laws, but I think that she's trying to run these folks out of business. I have a a disabled plaque that the state of Washington gives to you, because I'm a person that has a disability. You can't park in the disabled parking, because she will have you towed. Now, I know for a fact that's against the law. I worked for the state of Washington for 35 years. The state of Washington gives you a disabled sticker because you are disabled. You can park anywhere in the state of Washington with a disabled parking sticker without being towed. You can park downtown anywhere free with disabled. So I have to park further out, because I'm afraid of being towed, my car being towed from their from their facility. But I think, you know, you have a thing here that says, that talks about how you want to plan on providing easier access, good services within walking distance and spaces for gathering. You know, it talked about parking or something on here, but but that's not happening down here, where where these folks are. Something needs to be done. She's running people away, and she's hurting their business. And I think they've come to you all for help, and it's not happening. But I think as a disabled person, I know it's against the law for her to have people's cars towed when you're displaying a disabled plaque on your car. Is it is it or is it not? Is it is it is it not in here in the city of Renton? I just, can you answer that for me?
I can certainly get you the information you're asking.
You don't know that?
Well, I don't have all the details, but yes, if you have a placard, I believe that you can park in a disabled parking.
Without being towed. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so something needs to happen, because she's towing people's cars, and they, she's taking up all that parking space over there. For, and I understand, you know, people need to be able to park that live there, but you can't monopolize the the whole parking lot. You can't do that and threaten people to tow their cars away, because, you know, and you got to have some visit, you know, you're allowed to have visitors, right? But but that's not my concern. My concern is not being able to park and have a disabled plaque in my car and can't park there without being towed away. That's, I think that's against the law for her to do that. So something needs to be done about that, because you're hurting these people's business. She's hurting these people's business, and something needs to be done about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next up is Trina. That's all I have is Trina and then a-
That's what she calls me. I'm Miss Reggie. Hi, everybody. I'm here again. I finally got into the boiler room. I do have pictures that I want to present. There is a boiler that is not working, and they're sitting and waiting, saying who's gonna, the boiler, I believe, that's connected to me, is not working. And the boiler is over me. I'm on the third floor. It's on the fifth floor. So that means that boiler connected to me. I'm not having getting hot water. So we've had it tested. They're coming back out on the third to test it. One of the ladies, Charlene, will be back out to test it again. And from there, I don't know what's going to happen, but I know that boiler is not working. I have pictures that I want to present to give it to you, and it's, no, two pictures of every, every boiler that's in there, so.
Okay, I'll make sure they get coffee.
And that's, that's, that's about it right now. Just hoping I get some water. But the pictures are, are, tell you what boiler is not working, and what the maintenance told me this morning, that he said that boiler, they're waiting for warranty. I don't understand what they mean when he, when he said there's a warranty for something that they're waiting on, but warranty may not never come. So just wanted to announce that and give you pictures. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, next up is Matt Fraser.
Hello all. My name is Matt Fraser. I am a resident of this fine city, Renton, Washington. I come to speak to you today as the owner of a business in downtown Renton, a very small business, but we aspire to go from very small to small. So this is going to be one of those help me, help me speeches. Okay, so I hope that's okay. The first thing is we're facing a couple structural issues, I would say, that are challenges. The first one is the unified direction of traffic on South Third Street continues to reinforce, I think, to the public at large, that Renton is a city to drive through and not a city to drive to. Many others have spoken here about pedestrian safety issues on South Third Street more articulately than I can, so I'm not going to go back into that. But just to say, boy, it'd really be nice to have two-way traffic on that street for the business, for slowing down cars, and for making Renton a destination. Secondly, related to that, we have a really significant challenge on Sundays. Sunday should be such a delightful day of business for a little winery, right? And cell phone data presented by the city shows that it is the slowest day in downtown Renton all week. The landing is doing great, raining your corridor, you know, as it's a drama, but there's plenty of traffic going through, benefiting those businesses. However, in downtown Renton, it's really slow. Now, in our culture and in a lot of places around the world, Sunday is a day to be with family, a day to be with friends, your last chance to really relax before the workweek starts again. And I would love to see downtown Renton be the kind of place that families, friends want to go to. To that end, I'll recommend what I've seen in some very wonderful places around the world. I'll reference Mexico City as one example, where the major downtown thoroughfare is shut to pedestrian-only traffic for a significant part of the day. And it starts with a bunch of bicyclists. They're the ones who are crazy enough to get up at 7:00 and go exercise. And then aerobics classes sort of just pop up here and there, and, but mimes and performers, and it's just, it's just beautiful. And it's every Sunday. And it's every Sunday, pedestrian only on what is the most busy and trafficked street in the entire city, uh, which is massive, of course. So would love to see Sundays as a day for family and friends in downtown Renton, maybe move the farmer's market to a Sunday, the closest ones on Sundays, uh, to us of Mercer Island in Auburn. I don't think there's a lot of, you know, in that Venn diagram, I don't think there's a ton of overlap. Um, there's a reason that, uh, Ballard has a year-round market because vendors and customers show up every Sunday there regardless of the weather. So, uh, Sundays and two-way traffic. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Next up is Nancy Quinn.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, I live across from River, Riverview Park. Um, I haven't been to talk to you yet, but we've been struggling for, it's over two years. We have a homeless encampment over there and nothing is being done. They're starting to infiltrate our neighborhood. It's super upsetting. Um, we can't get any attention from the police. They don't, they've already cut down a telephone pole over there, so there's no electricity. You guys have blocked off the, or the Parks Department has blocked off the restrooms. There's now portlets, which is making our parking lot of the park into, um, somewhat of a rest stop, which is most unattractive. I look out my bedroom window and see three portlets. Not a fan. Um, we finally had the fire department out twice this weekend because they're burning in the middle of the, the, the forest. I can't have a burn barrel in my, on my private property, but they're allowed to have a fire in the middle of the forest. Doesn't seem like a very good idea to me. So we need some public safety, we need the police on our side, we need, I've called during the day, they don't come. I called, the first time I called the fire department, they sat in our neighborhood and drove away. I had to go into the park myself, see the fire, and call nine-one-one a second time at three in the afternoon. So we need the encampments, the, the police used to be really good about coming in and getting rid of them, but now we're not getting any attention from the police. So we need some help. Riverview Park, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I wanted to thank everybody that, um, showed up tonight to, um, speak in person. Um, we heard from a number of individuals, um, of course, the parking at Reserve, um, itself still seems to be an issue, uh, particularly with disabled parking. We'll definitely have somebody take a look at that. Um, hot water at the Reserve, I know that we've had staff out there, I don't know where we're at on that. Um, small businesses in downtown, um, I know that, that we turned Wells and Williams into downtown, or into two ways, and I believe that is still the intent to do second and third. Um, these are extremely expensive, um, propositions that you take time to, and planning, um, I think that was the other big part of that. And then Riverview Park, um, we are familiar with that, and that is, um, on the list to get cleaned up. There's, there's sections of the city that our teams are moving through to, to, um, to help clear up those encampments. So thank you for, for coming and talking to us today. Appreciate that. All right, we're on to the consent agenda next. There are nine items for council consideration. Are there any you would like pulled for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to pull item G.
Any others?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
Um, hearing no others, move to approve the consent agenda as published, uh, accepting item G.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilman Perez, that the council approve the consent agenda as published minus item G. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries, Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item G was a referral to the Transportation Committee for a construction services agreement, uh, uh, for the Maplewood Sidewalk Rehabilitation, uh, project. Uh, today, we just held our last, uh, Transportation Committee, and this is somewhat of a time sensitive nature, so I would like to move that this item go, council concur.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by, um, Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilman Perez, that item G go, council concur. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? All right, motion carries, thank you. Uh, we're moving on to unfinished business, Council President Albertson.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the committee of the whole has one report to present.
Right, Committee of the Whole Committee Report, this is regarding the 2026 Legislative Agenda. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the 2026 Legislative Agenda as presented, this is signed by the Council President.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Albertson.
Uh, move that council approve or concur with the Committee of the Whole Report as presented.
It's been moved by Councilmember, or Council President Albertson, second by Councilman Perez, that the council concur with the Committee of the Whole Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries, Councilmember Van.
Right, Utilities Committee Committee Report, the first is Amendment Number Two with WSP USA Incorporated for the Lynde Avenue Storm System Project. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Amendment Number Two to Contract Twenty-Four Zero-Two-Three with WSP USA Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars for engineering services associated with the completion of the design of the Lynde Avenue Southwest Storm System Improvement Project. Uh, this was approved virtually by the chair and vice chair and signed by the member.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? All right, motion carries.
All right, the final report for Utilities Committee is regarding an agreement with Mead and Hunt for the Taylor Avenue Northwest Storm System Project. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with Mead and Hunt Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety cents, plus any applicable state and, uh, sales tax for engineering services associated with the design of the Taylor Avenue Northwest Storm System Phase Two Project. Again, this was approved virtually by the chair and vice chair and signed by the, uh, committee member.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. All right, well, I went the wrong direction, but I'm gonna keep going that direction.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Aviation Committee has three reports to present.
All right, the first report for the Transportation Aviation Committee is regarding a lease assignment for, uh, Five Forty Renton Hangar LLC. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the transfer of leasehold interest in land, buildings, and facilities at the Renton Airport from Five Forty Renton Hangar LLC to RNT Five Forty LLC. This is signed by the committee, uh, chair, vice chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
I move, council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilman Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
Right, the next is regarding an amendment to the lease agreement with RNT Five Forty LLC and an amendment to a permit agreement with RNT Seven Five Zero LLC. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Addendum Eleven Twenty-Five to Lease Ninety-Nine Zero Zero Two with RNT Five Forty LLC, which updates the purpose of use for the leased area and updates lessers and lessees addresses. The committee further recommends authorize, authorization for the mayor and city clerk to execute Addendum One-Dash, uh, Twenty-Five to Permit Agreement Eleven Zero Zero Two with RNT Seven Fifty LLC, which updates the acknowledgement of sublease and documents the lesser as RNT Five Forty LLC. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
I move, council concur the Transportation Aviation Committee Report.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilman Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
All right, the final report for the Transportation Committee is regarding the extension of the Hauser Way North closure as part of the I-405 Rent to Bellevue, uh, project. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution authorizing the extension of the temporary Hauser Way North Street closure between Lake Washington Boulevard North and the Lowe's Business Delivery Access, uh, closure through May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-six. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move, council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilman Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. All right, we're on to Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera. Okay, well, next up is legislation. We have one resolution for adoption, two ordinance for first reading, and four for final reading.
All right, the first is, the resolution is regarding the, uh, extension of the street closure. A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington authorizing temporary full street closure of Hauser Way North between Lake Washington Boulevard North and Lowe's Business Access Room.
Mr. Mayor. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Prince, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
All right, the first ordinance for first reading is regarding the, uh, acquisition of real property for the, uh, using eminent domain. So an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, providing for the acquisition of real property located in Renton, Washington, tax parcel numbers three zero two, three zero five, nine zero nine six, three zero two, three zero five, nine zero nine eight, three zero two, three zero five, nine zero nine nine, three zero two, three zero five, nine zero nine one, including through the exercise of eminent domain for a city maintenance facility and resource center, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
Right, next, uh, the final ordinance for first reading is, uh, regard, is essentially the critical areas ordinance. Uh, an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Sections Four Three Zero Five Zero, Four Eleven Thirty, Four Eleven Forty, and Four Eleven One Ninety of the Rent Municipal Code, and amending the following subsections of Section Four Three Fifty, so Four Three Fifty A, Four Three Fifty B One, Four Three Fifty C, Four Three Fifty D Three, Four Three Fifty D Five C, Four Three Fifty E Three, Four Three Fifty E Five, Four Three Fifty E Six, Four Three Fifty F, Four Three Fifty G, Four Three Fifty H Three, Four Three Fifty L One, Four Three Fifty L Three, Four Three, or maybe that's an I, I One and I Three, Four Three Fifty J Two A, Four Three Fifty J Four, Four Three Fifty L One A, Four Three Fifty L One B, Four Three, uh, Fifty L One G, and Four Eleven One Ninety B, amending critical area regulations, including adding standards for consistency with best available science and new definition in Section Four Eleven Thirty, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I may move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries.
All right, next up, we have the four ordinances for second and final reading. Uh, the first is regarding an extension of the fee, uh, fee waivers for parking at the city center parking garage. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, extending the temporary waiver of parking fees for the city center parking garage established by ordinance number six one three nine for periods of up to ten hours within the city's center, uh, parking garage located at six five five South Second Street, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
I move the ordinance to be, to be adopted as read.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is second and final reading unless there's discussion that requires a roll call.
Council President Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
And Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
And Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries.
All right, the next ordinance, uh, is amending the B and O tax model. Yeah, five-two-five Rent City Code. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington implementing statutory changes reflected in the October two thousand and twenty-five Revised Model Ordinance for Business and Occupation Tax by amending subsections five-two-five-two J One through five-two-five-two J Three, five-two-five-two J Five, five-two-five-two R Two, five-two-five-two Y, and five-two-five-two Z of the Rent Municipal Code by changing the taxation of certain activities from services to retail, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is second and final reading unless there's discussion that requires a roll call.
All right, Council President Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
And Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries.
The next one is regarding amending Rent Municipal Code Five Five Three for Business License Threshold. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington implementing statutory changes reflected in the Revised Business License Model Threshold Ordinance, amending subsection five-five-three B of the Rent Municipal Code, adjusting the Business License Threshold Exemption, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the ordinance be adopted as read unless there's discussion that requires a roll call.
All right, Council President Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
And Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries.
Right, the final ordinance for, uh, second and final reading is, uh, amending the Comp Plan Transportation Element. So an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending the city's comprehensive plan to adopt the city's new transportation element, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is second and final, uh, reading unless there's discussion that requires a roll call.
All right, Council President Albertson. Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
And Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, up next is new business, Council President Albertson.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, on, uh, next Monday, December eighth, at, uh, six P M., the Committee of the Whole will meet in the, uh, Council Conference Center, one item on the agenda, and that is the Parks Recreation and Open Space, otherwise known as Pro's Plan Update. And then at seven P M., the council, uh, will hold this regular meeting here in council chambers and via video conference, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I think, before we move on, this is the time where, yeah, we only do this once a year, so I'll make sure we get this right. So, um, let's see here, I'm gonna open the floor for the twenty-twenty-six Council President nominations.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President. Yes, Council President.
Uh, I nominate Councilmember Perez as Council President for 2026.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any more nominations? All right, then.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I close, or I move to close the nominations for the 2026 Council President.
Second. Sorry, we didn't vote on the last motion.
You don't choose nominations need to be, don't need a second.
Oh, they made a motion. Somebody seconded something.
Yeah.
But we were, we were moving to nominate someone, and then we were going to close it, and then we're going to vote.
I moved to nominate.
Moved to nominate.
So now you, you moved to close the nominations, correct? Okay, nominations are closed.
We need a motion.
Yep. Now you make your motion.
Exactly. Uh, let's see, oh, wherever, yeah, move to elect Councilmember Perez as Council President for 2026.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Albertson, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, to elect Councilmember Perez as Council President for 2026. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? All right, motion carries.
One abstention.
She abstains.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
She abstains.
Oh, one abstention, okay. Six and one abstentions, all right. Um, well, starters, congratulations. Now, we're going to move on, the floor is open for the 2026 Council President Pro-Tim nominations.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council.
I nominate Councilmember McGurven as Council President Pro-Tim for 2026.
Second.
I mean, you don't need seconds.
It's not, it's not a second, yeah. Are there any others?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Yeah. I'm a council member, but I think I'm a physician, and I haven't been on the council for the last six years, and I haven't really seen that really being practiced, though I know that potentially all the votes have already been chanted or has somehow. But again, like, I really care, I do ask that our council, you know, to make sure that citizens are represented, and also your council. And I'm not talking to the council member, but I would like to talk to the council member who there is, we talk about, and just making sure that it's an opportunity. So, that's just, probably discussion in the paper, and say, for the others to have opportunities.
Okay, so you have nominated Councilmember Rivera. Okay, I'm looking at my notes here, and are there any others before we move on? Okay, there are two nominees for 2026 Council President Pro-Tim.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to take a roll call vote to determine the 2026 Council President Pro-Tim.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, to take a roll call to determine the Council President Pro-Tim. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Jason, you're up.
Right, so the nominees are Councilmember McGurven and Councilmember Rivera, so Council President Albertson.
Uh, Councilmember McGurven.
Councilmember Rivera.
I guess I'll vote for myself, Councilmember Rivera, sure, why not?
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Councilmember McGurven.
McGurven. Councilmember McGurven.
McGurven.
And Councilmember Perez.
McGurven.
McGurven. And Councilmember Vaughn. I didn't hear you, sorry. What?
Rivera.
Rivera, okay.
Right, Mr. Mayor, we have five for McGurven and two for Rivera.
All right, congratulations to you both, look forward to working with you next year.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on now, next up for new businesses, Councilmember Vaughn.
Nope.
What's that?
The direction.
Well, I was going the wrong way the whole time. But I'll, I'll go ahead and revert back, Councilmember Rivera.
Doesn't matter, but I appreciate you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you all so much for making the second-to-last council meeting anything but boring, so I appreciate you all. Uh, yes, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting for the final time in 2025. We have a robust agenda. The first item will be an update on our animal control program. The second will be an update on our school resource officers. Our third agenda item will be an update on Fifth and Sixth and Park Avenue, our derelict building. The fourth will be the RFA briefing, and the fifth will be emerging issues in public safety, which I will make sure that we discuss homeless encampments. We have seen a number of emails come through as of recent, not only in my neighborhood, but also at the Riverview Apartments. I wanted to appreciate, or thank the public commenter who came and spoke today, I appreciate you sharing what's been going on, and so we will add that as an emerging issue. I appreciate you.
All right, Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, December 8, at 1:45 PM, the Community Services Committee will be meeting. We have four items on the agenda. The first is an Equity Commission appointment, the second clam lights and winter illuminations, third Renton Regional Trails Initiative, and the fourth is emerging issues in Parks